So before we start, before I officially call the meeting to order, we just took a picture. I got this, let me explain this before we start. This is Dear Mayor Browning, we are hoping you will help us out. This little guy right here, this little guy's name is Flat Stanley and he loves adventure. Our third grade class is working on a geographic project and sending Flat Stanley to numerous places in Michigan. We'll learn about these places and find them on the map if you are willing. So, we took a picture of Flat Stanley. This is Ella. Ella is a third grader at Stone Elementary. So, we now have officially welcomed Flat Stanley to the city. His next stop will be the fire department, I hope. And we'll send him back. So with that in mind, I think we're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin with our prayer and pledge. So those that would like to join in, bow their heads please. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve the citizens. We give you all the praise and glory, Lord, and ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate the business of the city. We ask that you be with all our citizens, be with our public safety officers and our firefighters, along with all the city workers. Keep them safe and in your will. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, and to your justice for
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mellon.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Here.
Councilmember Bench.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Balls.
Here.
Councilmember Humphreys.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
And I'd like to remind the audience that this is a good time for the audience members and city council members to quickly grab your electronic devices and make sure that we have those so they do not interfere with our council meeting. Madam Clerk, any announcements?
Yes, I do have several of them. The city manager has removed consent agenda number item six. Therefore, no action will be requested at this meeting for agenda item number six. City Hall will be closed Monday, May 28th for the Memorial Day holiday. And due to the Memorial Day holiday, the trash collection day will be delayed by one day. And also to remind everyone that the yard waste collection service is the same day as your regular trash day. And the yard waste must be in paper yard waste bags or in thirty-five gallon or smaller garbage can, not weighing more than fifty pounds. And it needs to have a yard waste sticker affixed to the front of that can. These stickers are available at the city clerk's office. Also, we have three Saginaw Public School Board positions that will be on the November 6th ballot. Information and forms are available at the clerk's office during regular business hours. And candidates for the school board positions must file with the city clerk's office on or before July twenty-first, oop, July twenty-fourth, sorry, July twenty-fourth at four o'clock PM. And also, we will have four council member positions will be on the November 6th ballot. Information petitions and affidavit of identity forms are available at the clerk's office during regular business hours. Candidates for the council positions must file at the city clerk's office on or before August 7th at five o'clock PM. The city has acquired new election equipment as funded through a grant agreement. The city clerk and the staff will conduct an open house to demonstrate this new equipment prior to its use in August 7th and November 6th. The open houses will be held on Tuesday, June 12th and Wednesday, June 13th in council chambers at five o'clock PM until eight o'clock PM. The open house will feature a hands-on opportunity and demonstrations to use the equipment. Mayor, our next item is that we have a certificate designated May 25th, 2018 as Theodore Redkey Day.
Danny Ransford is here from the Friends of Theodore Redkey. Thank you very much. Let me read the certificate of recognition and then after you accept it, we'd love to hear your comments, okay? So, certificate of recognition. On behalf of the citizens of Saginaw, it is an honor and a privilege to extend this certificate of recognition in honor of Theodore Redkey. A famous poet who was born on May 25th, 1908 in the city of Saginaw. Redkey was regarded as one of the most accomplished and influential poets of his generation, which resulted in receiving a Pulitzer Prize, two National Book Awards, and the Bollingen Prize. Theodore's legacy remains strong in the city of Saginaw, his final resting place. And in 2012, the United States Postal Service dedicated a postage stamp in honor of Theodore Redkey, the Redkey Forever Stamp. We join together to honor Theodore Redkey, a renowned figure whose extraordinary life and literary contributions will have a lasting influence around the world, throughout our nation and across Michigan. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, hereby proclaim May 25th, 2018 as Theodore Redkey Day in the city of Saginaw and call upon the citizens of this community to reflect on and honor the life of this brilliant individual. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be fixed this 21st day of May in the year of our Lord, 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Also Floyd Clark, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphreys, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, Demont L. Tibbs, and our city manager Timothy Morales. Congratulations, and would you come forward and to accept this? Yep.
Well, just briefly, I just want to thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to honor Theodore Redkey and to get his name out there and your support. Thank you for the proclamation. He was born May 25th, so May is Redkey Month for sure. And we feel that Redkey makes Saginaw unique in the Great Lakes Bay region. Midland doesn't have a Pulitzer Prize winning poet, nor does Bay City. So here we are, and it's a double celebration for us this year. We're going to celebrate his birthday on Memorial Day, May 28th, at the SASSA auditorium. We're bringing in a ragtime orchestra, the River Raisin Ragtime Review. It's a vaudeville show. They play at Greenfield Village. And Catherine McMichael, who lives in Saginaw, who is an accomplished musician and composer, is part of this group. So it's top notch. And in some of my literature, I'm inviting you to come. We'd enjoy that, have you there. Jeff Vanisanti from Delta College is our poet in residence. And then also, we have a brochure of our summer picnics. And it's our 18th season of literary picnics in a poet's backyard. Plus, I guess it's almost a triple celebration, the Friends of Theodore Redkey have been a nonprofit foundation for 20 years. And so the odds were against us for a historic house to be open that long, but here we are. We're here to stay and we want to keep adding to the quality of life in Saginaw. It's fun. Come and visit us, take in a literary picnic, enjoy a concert. We'd enjoy having you.
And what day is the concert?
It's May 28th, Monday, from 2:00 to 4:00 at SASSA.
And that's all?
Yeah, tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for children. We've said $5 for students, and I guess any adult could claim that they're a student and get in for $5 if you do. We won't quarrel with you. I also have his biography, The Glass House, and I'd like to donate it to your library here because it talks about Saginaw in 1908 and before. So I'll also give it to the bench.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mayor, you are now at public hearings.
And we are at public hearing. We have three of them now. I knew there was a reason you said that. I thought, why does she tell me? I know that. Okay, public hearing. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of that particular hearing, since we have three of them. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or a designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions, but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, or the audience. And the public hearing is not a question and answer session.
Our public hearing is for the fiscal year 2018-2019, proposed budget and property tax mileage.
And is there anyone that would like to speak, reference the fiscal year 2018-19 proposed budget and property tax mileage? Second time, is there anyone that would like to address council, reference the fiscal year 2018-2019 proposed budget and property tax mileage? And third final time, is there anyone that would like to speak, reference the 2018-2019 proposed budget and property tax mileage? Being none, council members?
Move to close the public hearing.
Got a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed budget and property tax mileage for 2018-19. Do we have a second? And it's been second. Any further discussion by council? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our second public hearing is a special assessment district for a police and fire mileage for fiscal year 2018-2019.
And is there any public that would like to comment on the special assessment district for the police and fire mileage for fiscal year 2018 and 2019? Second time, is there anyone that would like to speak, reference the special assessment district for the police and fire mileage for fiscal year 2018-19? And third and final time, is there anyone that would like to address council, reference the special assessment district for a police and fire mileage for fiscal year 2018-19? Being none, council members entertain a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved and supported. Council members, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our third and final public hearing is for the Downtown Development Authority District, mileage to be levied on properties within the district.
And is there anyone to speak, reference the Downtown Development Authority District mileage to be levied on properties within the district? Is there anyone that would like to speak, reference the Downtown Development Authority District mileage to be levied on properties within the district? And third and final time, don't stand up, Mr. Miller. Third and final time, Downtown Development Authority District mileage to be levied on properties within the district. Being none, council members, I need a motion to close the hearing? Been moved and supported. Council members, is there any discussion upon that? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
For our personal appearances.
Okay, and I got personal appearances. As we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens, from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will refer to city staff. Madam Clerk?
Our first personal appearance is Sandra Wooton. We do not see her. We will go on to Rosa Holiday.
Yes, yes, good view. Yep, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, clerk, I'm Rosa Holiday, 6261 Greenview Place in Bay City. And I am here to give you the events that we have planned for the first annual Roosevelt Austin Day event. Now, the first one will be the rollout, the unveiling of the Roosevelt Austin Avenue. We've been waiting on this date tentatively. It will be scheduled for the 30th of this month. Now, I'll call into the city again, they're having problems getting the material to make the signs. Yeah, so we've been on hold since the end of March, and we looking forward to doing that, May 30th. And Honorable Mayor, we would like for you to speak at that event. And it would be held, as I said here, right on Johnson Streets, second, which would be Roosevelt Austin and Johnson, and everyone's invited, all the council members so far invited to that. Then our next event will be the banquet, which will be held in August, August the 17th, at the Horizon Conference Center. And this, the only paid event that's going to be scheduled. That will be $60 for the banquet. We have souvenir booklet for that, and we want to see each one of you, all of you there. It's a community thing. We have many people coming back to the community. Which brings us to the parade on Saturday, the 19th of August, will be the community parade. And we would like your participation in that. Now, the plan is to start at 10:00 AM, and we will start at then the Roosevelt Austin Avenue in Washington. And we will walk down to Johnson Street, right into the Huntington Park, where we would have an all-day musical, gospel singing, and it's going to be a celebration, a real celebration, all day. And that Sunday, Reverend Austin will be preaching on that Sunday at Zion Baptist Church, which we have a location here, 721 Johnson Street. We asking you to come to that. And the picnic afterward, right there at Zion Baptist. Community is invited to all of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And remind council members, you have a five-minute limit for a little while, five minutes. And we begin with our Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but other than saying welcome to everybody who's here and on SGTV attending our meeting, I'm gonna pass.
I will pass as well.
Well, thanks, Mayor. I guess I'll just be brief. Fifteen, right, okay. I just was, well, as we go through the budget, it reminds me of what my grandparents used to tell me growing up, when I used to spend money. He says, "Well, for where you're treacherous, there your heart will be." And I'm still learning that lesson in forty years, well, a little more than forty years. I'm still fighting to learn that proverb he used to always tell me. But anyway, I guess what I wanted to say was, when I was looking at the budget, I mean, there was really three things I was looking at as far as safety. And so with Covenant Hospital and I guess covering the cost for two officers, I should be appreciative as far as hiring or adding a position for a, I don't know the official term, but an ordinance officer. Ever since I, before I came on council and while in my beginning years of council, a lot of the times the neighborhood association would tell me, you know, we need to be a little more forceful in dealing with ordinance violations. And it appears that with this budget, it looks like it's going in that direction after a few years. There was always concern with me as far as the blight, and so I'm hoping going forward that we can do what we can to maintain a bulk trash pickup because I think as far as the policy matter, that helps deal with our blight and trash issue here in the city. And just kind of on a smaller note, on a smaller scale, is that Anderson Richmond Center, it's been operating at a deficit for a few years now. There's been a slight increase there as far as funding. But going forward, Anderson Richmond Center is clearly a staple in our neighborhood and in our city, and our city should do what we can to preserve that. You know, just you keep tinkering away, tinkering away, and at some point you're gonna ask, "Well, what happened to the Anderson and Richmond Center?" So I guess I just want to encourage our residents and our active organizations, if you haven't had an event, you consider possibly doing that at the Anderson and Richmond Center just to avoid possibly losing that centerpiece for our city. As I said before, it's still operating at a deficit. Revenues are down. The only way we can reverse that is if we utilize that facility. And as far as the fire department, just my personal take on it, is that the police had to right-size itself to an extent, and there were some growing pains in that. And we come out of it, and there's been a consistent decrease in crime. So it looked like to be a very stressful situation. We came out on, I don't wanna say come out, came out on top, but it appears that the city managed that correctly. So hopefully, and I'm hopeful about it and I'm positive about it, that the same will happen with the fire department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I wanted to mention was, I attended this morning the groundbreaking for the new Saginaw County Jail over at the corner of Harrison Adams. Chairman of the County Board of Commissioners, Carl Ruth, was in charge of this ceremony. Commissioner Cheryl Hadsel was the chair of the committee that kept this ball rolling for four years. And our sheriff, Bill Fetterspiel, spoke at it. You may remember, he's a former city councilman here. And this is something he's been working on very hard. So we're gonna be seeing that construction over approximately the next year, and I believe the end of next summer, that facility's supposed to be open. At that ceremony, Herb Spence of Spence Brothers mentioned, "It is the 125th anniversary of Spence Brothers." And if you look around this city, pretty much if you see a building taller than two stories, they may have built it. He has a little game show he plays when he's emceeing an event himself, and "Did We Build It?" for Spence Brothers is a fun game when he's at an event. So I wanted to congratulate them on 125 years here in Saginaw. And that's all.
I don't have much to say either, but I would like to report that I do always talk about my little brother in the Big Brothers Program, and I'm gonna speak on him again today. He's graduated from high school, real proud of him. He's going to Saginaw Valley. I was, I'm a board member of the Big Brothers and Sisters Program, and I didn't know it, but the loans came to his high school, they gave him an award and a scholarship for $500. And they give, and he's going to be playing for the loans too. He's gonna sign a contract to play for the loans for one day. They're gonna do an official thing at the park at June the 9th, he's gonna sign a one-day contract. And I'm so happy for him because this is the same guy that got into a fight when he's in his seventh grade, some boys got the best of him, and his grades went from AB to CD within a week. And we did intervention and kind of find out what happened. And I told him that he's just as smart as any one of these guys is, and he's gonna be a good person, and he said that meant a lot to him, and that's one of the reasons why he's going on to college. Due to some contacts that I have, he's gonna be gainfully employed for four years at the Whangas Credit Union, while he's going to school, they're gonna employ him too. So it proves that if anybody get involved in a young kid's life, that you can make it better. And I would like to ask everybody here to think about getting involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters Program, or just mentor somebody in your community. So other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us here tonight. I just want to extend my appreciation to Ms. Ann from the Rothie House and the possible birthday of Theodore Rothie. It's his 110th and 20 years that they've been around. That's a great feat. And definitely not easy running a nonprofit for that long, so thank you, Ms. Ann, for all your work that you do over there at the Rothie House. Also, just wanted to address some of the calls that I've received this week about the budget and some of the various aspects, and I just want to say thank you to the individuals and the city residents who called me about that. Very appreciative. And what I can say is that I hear your concerns and that the budget is a living document. We change it quite frequently. So it's a very big budget, and we've done our homework for sure on that. Mr. Manager, also, I called inspections today and left a message, but didn't get a call back. I do have a citizen who has an issue with mold, and I'm just figuring out what we can do if that's like a building violation to go in there. I didn't see John. So if we could follow up on that, I'd really appreciate it. And I wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation to everybody who helped. We had a lot of city staff who assisted with the efforts for the Riverfront Development Commission's 16th Annual Beautification Day. I even, I got a message from one of the media outlets in response to me questioning. You know, I think this is a pretty good story about the city of Saginaw. We raised thousands of dollars, 264 volunteers who took the afternoon off and rolled up their sleeves to give back to our community, and we could not get one positive word. So it tells you what clickbait we have out there and what the narrative they're still trying to paint in our city, and I just think it's absolutely disgusting. But thank you so much to everybody. If you were out there that day, hopefully we can get some council people out there next year. It was just phenomenal. When you see people, hundreds of people in the various locations throughout our city, man, that will pull at your heart for somebody who grew up in this community. It's just absolutely awesome to see. Our city is not dead, but we're living. But we are having to struggle a little bit with getting as much recognition as I think that we deserve. We have groundbreaking for university in downtown. We have a $23.5 million farmers market, but yet we're still struggling to get some good PR. So let's keep it up. Ms. Rosa, great job. Looking forward to attending some of the events. Ms. Rosa, great job, looking forward to attending some of the events, but that's really all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Good evening. Ms. Rucki, this is Ms. Ann, okay, Ms. Ann, you're not here, but maybe you'll catch it on TV, congratulations, well done. Ms. Rosa, I will be in attendance as much as I can. I too received some calls about the budget, and I'm hoping that moving forward, we will do promotions and all of that equally across the board. Does it sway my vote, 'cause you get the calls, it never sways my vote, but I need people to understand that this is a work in progress, that's what I was told, subject to change. On Thursday, unity in the city, we did a cleanup, we cleaned up 15th and Hamilton, Lydiah, we did like a three-block radiance, thanks to Josh Stempel, that we called at the very last minute, 'cause we had a project that we couldn't do, and he helped assist us. The citizens are cleaning up their area and helping, so we, so we wanna think that we're helping the city, because we're keeping our area up. Not only were we cleaning, we were scraping paint, painting houses, I'm not a painter, so I didn't put my name in that hat, we redid some bedrooms and some rooms for some elderly in the area, it was a joint process with Saginaw Community Action Center. On Saturday, the time of my life, we walked in the rain, I'm used to it, we walked in the rain and we knocked doors to get our 60-plus olders an alternative to register to be on, or to take an application out to be on the absentee ballot. It was phenomenal, we didn't have a whole lot of people, but we did have a young lady who was 12 years old, who we're doing the walk, is now convinced she's going around for a school council in her area, and so we gonna get her some lollipops, and we gonna show her how a campaign is run. I encourage everyone, if you are not an absentee ballot voter and you are eligible, things happen, we don't always plan to get sick, and I just want people to know that that's out there for you if you want it. So anybody on the side of my boy, we gonna do it again, thank you, Ms. Jean, I know that it may create a little work, but I know that you're able and capable, because the majority of the 60-year-olds that we visit, we had conversation, this was not a walk up to their door and just, "Here, I'm Councilwoman Moore," I didn't even acknowledge I was Councilwoman Moore. I went giving them an opportunity, and a lot of them actually told us to our face. We like going to the polls, 'cause we get to see our friends, but we did offer them that alternative, so it was really, really fun, and I know that we've got some more ventures, 'cause we got some more areas that we need to keep covering. All that we didn't do, we gonna go back, but we gonna do the first round, then we'll go back for a second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple things, I hate to repeat everything, but thank you, Rosa, for being here and bringing that up to us, and at different events. I hope, I hope the material comes in, I hope we can get that just done as fast as we can. So thank you for sharing that with council members. The Anderson and Richmond Center, each year they pull out a handbook that lists all the events that are coming up for this summer, and that will come out Tuesday, and so there's hundreds of events that is gonna be there just in the city of Saginaw, so look forward to that, and as soon as we get those, council members will make sure all council members get some, and then get them out into the community also. It was a great time at, not a great time, I did have a chance to stop by the ceremony there for the groundbreaking of the county jail, and well-attended, and I think they did a super job with that, it's much needed, and I think we heard from our citizens, and so did the county, and we certainly listened, and they've made some changes, and so that is a result of listening to the community. Harrison Street remains open, and some other things in the area, so they did good. I was very impressed with Mr. Herb Spence, who announced that today, the groundbreaking today is the actual day that is their 125th anniversary, and the Spence Brothers remains in the city of Saginaw, they are moving to their new headquarters, which is gonna be at the SVRC Building, and when you think of it, Spence Building, Spence Brothers is just finishing up SVRC, they're just finishing up the operating rooms over at Covenant, they're now starting at Delta College downtown, and they're now starting with the county jail. And so in-town business here doing a tremendous job, and we just applaud them for the 125 years, that they've been very dedicated to the city of Saginaw, really appreciate that. Congratulations, Michael Balls, on your little brother there succeeding, council member would, council members would like it if you could get us some tickets for the Loons game, we'd be glad to join you and help celebrate with you, and let us, let us know when that date is, that's, that's quite a contractor, you'll be his agent for the one day?
Yes.
Okay, I thought he would, but he signed in a contract, so I'm glad about that. Councilman Bryant, thank you so much, you put a lot of work into that riverfront, along with the committee, but you yourself do a lot of work with that, a lot of volunteers, amazing, and the places these volunteers come from, a lot, some of, a lot of these volunteers aren't even from the city, and they're from all over, Flint, they're from all over, and so thank you for that, I went by the Craylo Park today, on my way to Anderson, and it just, that whole area there, just looking sharp and looking, looking really, really nice, appreciate that, and also the cleanup out there on 15th and the area, very nice, very nicely done. It's amazing how many, people don't see that, they're coming out and trying to get, I'll be honest with you, trying to get the media out there is like pulling teeth, you know, you know, is there any controversy? The media did speak to me about the groundbreaking at the, at the county jail, and their question was, they had a person who was upset about it and what we doing about it. So they even took a negative and tried to make it happen, but it didn't, we have good, we have good, good relationship with the county, so, and so forth. So with that, I think that's it, I might have missed anything there? Okay, on behalf of myself and this little flat guy, let's move on.
Okay, we are at reports for manager.
Hi, I'm Mr. Manager, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor, well first, Councilman Bryant, Mr. Darren Jerome is here today, he's our chief inspector, so he is here for Mr. Stempel, and he sent me a message that says that we refer mold complaints to the county health department, so they should be able to help out the individual. I wanted to thank Dennis Jordan and Lisa Crook for setting up CPR training for our non-public safety employees, and we had it here in council chambers, and I think we did about three or four days worth, and involved CPR and AED, and I think next time we have another trainer that will probably utilize Mr. Mayor. But I think it also highlighted, we should probably look into additional AEDs for this building, probably on the second floor, I think that would be something that would benefit us, and I do think that we, we have to add some of those to some of our other buildings, and probably, we do have them in police vehicles and fire, but perhaps we should have some on some of the streets vehicles as well, since they're out in the neighborhoods and could assist, so it kind of got some of us thinking about those issues as well, so thanks to HR for setting that up, and to Dennis and Lisa. Thank a number of council members attended the police awards and memorial ceremony, I think we had really good attendance, so thanks to all council members for attending that. We are working with a developer on 633 South Washington, Michael Balls had asked about that a few meetings ago, so Councilmen, we are working on that, we would have been added it to the budget, but now there, there is an interested party, the mayor, and I and Mr. Stempel met with him last week, so we'll proceed from there, and as we get more information that becomes public, we'll provide additional updates to city council. The citywide meeting is this Thursday, May 24th at 5:30, at First Ward Community Center this month, 1410 North 12th Street. The speaker this month is Zach Branigan, who is the director of Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. If you can't make it to that meeting, we're going to have Zach presenting at council one of our upcoming meetings, probably in June, so I'm sure he'll talk about some of the same topics. The, I received a notification from the chief that the police officer of the month is Officer Justin McGregor, so if you know Officer McGregor and want to congratulate him, please do so. The, and with the budget on the agenda this evening, I wanted to again thank Yolanda Jones and the staff for the office of management and budget, and all the department and division heads that put everything together, and then is refined by Ms. Jones and, and her staff. We only do see the budget here for about three meetings every year, but that is a document that takes five to six months to put together, and as Councilman Bryant said, it's a living document, because we don't know everything that's going to happen, we're still, we talk about the changes that occurring, that are almost current in our mind, but we have changes that could happen that we don't know yet. We do have a gubernatorial election this year, so right now we have state police in the city, that doesn't mean they're going to be here next January, depending upon who is elected and what their priorities are, so hopefully we can get them to stay, I think we have a great relationship working with them, they don't answer calls for service, but they do proactive policing, and they help with investigations, so I think that has been scaling back, hopefully we can keep what we have, but that's one of the items, another item that we were notified on, we did not receive a waiver for the OPEB planning, so we're gonna have to submit a plan to treasury for that, which I suspected, so we have to have room for that in our budget as well. I assume they're gonna want to see some money set aside for future planning purposes for that, so that's another thing that we did not know throughout the planning process, and something that we are going to have to address. Appreciate the comments by Councilman Tibbs as well, we, we did want to add a code enforcement officer for some time, so, but the funding wasn't there, as we said at the last meeting, Mr. Stempel's worked with Ms. Jones on illustrating how that can be funded through potential additional fees. If you remember from our planning session, council did also identify that we should be looking into adding a planning official, given all of the development that we have downtown, we weren't able to add that into the budget this year because of these unknowns and some other limitations, but that's something that we'll continue to look, look at and examine, and hopefully try to fund in a future year, because I think it is, it is something that we, we do need, and the last time we met with Michigan State University Land, Land Use Department, I think they mentioned we should probably have about five planners for a city our size. So that's something we'll look into. I agree with Councilman Tibbs on the Anderson Center, Phil Carwatt and Ms. Jones have been working with them to, on the operation to make sure that we can maintain that in the city, I think they're actually doing very well on their deficit elimination plan, they're a little bit ahead of schedule, I believe that's a, was a five-year plan, and they reduced that deficit last year a little bit more than what was in the plan, but as Councilman Tibbs said, we do need to encourage people to utilize that facility, I think it's a great facility and a great location, so we'll continue to promote that. Since we did talk about department heads, I asked department heads for examples of what they've done throughout the years to increase efficiency, or reduce costs, or increase revenue, because as you know, we always have increasing unfunded liabilities and causing higher annual required contributions, pension, OPEB, capital improvements for facilities, old equipment, fleet, and water and sewer infrastructure needs. It's a little easier to get some of them to expound upon that than others, but I ended up getting six pages. I just wanted to mention a few of these things, so that council gets an idea about what department heads work on beyond the day-to-day activities. In human resources, we, within the past few years, transitioned retirees in 2017 from 20 retiree plans to four, creating cost reduction of about $3 million per year, and they also transitioned police and fire pension systems to MERS, which eliminated costs, administrative costs, legal fees, medical fees, consulting fees, and other management fees, that save about $250,000 a year to the pension plan, and that was paid directly out of that plan. The police department has done a number of things, I just wanted to, to pick a couple that I thought were pretty unique, one of them is Chief Leif did, did do a lot of changes, Chief Ruth has expanded upon that, I think, and continued it, and one of the things they've changed in their scheduling is they always have two members of the emergency services team on duty per shift, which allows them to assess situations, and those members have all the equipment in their vehicle, they have the training and the knowledge to let the chief know if they should be a call-out. That was the case with the two officers who dealt with the individual at Covenant Hospital who had a gun in his room. Those were two officers that were SWAT team members, and that did not result in a SWAT call-out, because they were able to assess the situation and determine that they could handle it, and that reduces overtime for the department, where previously we probably would have had a lot more call-outs than we, we have had, I don't remember the last time we had a regular SWAT or EST call-out. Another change that was made there that I, I really thought was, was pretty unique and provided better services, they restructured the traffic position, if you're familiar, we had an officer that worked on traffic calls, meaning traffic accidents, so we had one officer, four shifts a week, for 10 hours per shift working on that, chief has changed that to two positions that do some other activities as well, but now we have 12 hours of coverage seven days a week for traffic call-outs, so it doesn't pull officers away that are doing other activities, so those were two really good examples of changes there. Fiscal Services has been working on defunct Brownfield reconciliation, and this is something that goes way back into 2002, 2003, Councilman Milne is on the Brownfield Authority, I believe, so he's aware of this work, but they've been closing them out and have refunded $30,000 to city operating funds this year, and $4,000 to rubbish funds, and I think there's still more work to be done there, so we'll see additional funding coming through there. And they've also worked with the clerk's office and inspections on the non-owner occupied registry, and that has generated a number of different revenue, from property taxes to fees and inspection fees, we estimate that to be about $300,000 in fees per year that we haven't been collecting previously. They've also outsourced to additional bulk mail and printing and saved funds there, and I go back to 10 years ago, when we contracted with Plant and Rand for controller services, that saves in excess of $100,000 a year, so I would estimate since contracting, that fiscal services probably saved over a million dollars on that. And it all goes to the city general fund, so it doesn't go back to that department to, to utilize. Waste water treatment has also been, and water treatment has done a lot of activities, and primarily cost-saving, they've switched to LED lighting, and that saves $30,000 a year in electrical costs in wastewater department. They've changed bio salads handling processes, saving about $18,000, and converted to pumps, Kim has talked about that at the council meetings. Kim has talked about that at the council meetings. I thought this was really interesting there. At the Kochville Pump Station, the water treatment plant has installed a VFD, which I believe is variable frequency device, right? Drive, which they can, they can make the pumps run more efficient, and that saves about $800 a day in electric costs out there. They've also changed chemical delivery loads, which has been able to make their ordering more cost-effective. Technical Services, you would not think of as necessarily a cost savings area, but Jeff Klopsik has done a lot in that area. We did move from Sun Guard, which was our HD program, to BSNA, and a number of council members remember that. We save about $75,000 a year with that change in service fees. And we saved so much, we were able to pay off the loan for that purchase two years early, so now it's just a savings to all of our funds. We did eliminate three positions in information services that saves about $200,000 a year, and I think we did that about seven years ago. So again, that's about 1.4 million over the course of time. And they also moved the analog phone to fiber network, which saves $50,000 for the city annually. City Clerk has decreased the number of polling stations with population, and worked on processing of license renewals and collection, and also improved the tracking and active timing for MCIs for enforcement. The big one in the Public Services Department that Phil Carwatt's worked on is the LED street lighting and traffic signal. That saves $550,000 to $600,000 a year. But we also can't forget, we did have a citizen desire for recycling collection, which we didn't have for a number of years. Phil did move that in-house, which made it a lot more cost-effective. That is $400,000 less per year than it would be if we utilized the waste authority or waste management for that. The Fire Department has replaced, actually replaced, two engines with no increase in the budget for that replacement, based on their analysis of the maintenance costs related to old apparatus. They've also now moved to having battalion chiefs and the fire chief assuming a lot of the clerical and payroll responsibilities in the Fire Department. We've had to reduce, actually, I think they only ever had about two administrative personnel, and both of those are now gone, so Command Staff has absorbed that. They've also worked with the Michigan State Police on fire investigations, and they've started utilizing staff to, for community projects to reduce risks, installing free smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, and delivering in-home fire safety education. The, one big thing that Neighborhood Services and Inspections, that's inspections, and we used to talk about it a lot more, and now it's, I think, just accepted as if it's a department. But SCENIC was something that the inspectors kind of thought of on their own and put together, and it became a pretty well-known way to do code enforcement throughout the state. They used to go, I know, to different cities to tell them how they set that up, and John points out, it's interdepartmental cooperation, intergovernmental cooperation, employees' willingness to cross-train, working with neighborhood groups and empowering them to work with inspectors and gain the trust in the neighborhood. So I think that's, that is a great operation, that really we didn't increase funding for inspections to do that either. And the Office of Management and Budget, Yolanda wrote a lot out, and I think it goes back to, really, their office has taken on a lot of what our Development Department used to do. We eliminated the director and the assistant director and the administrative staff there. We did not add any personnel, so that probably saves about $200,000 a year as well. Yolanda and her staff have worked on place plan initiatives, redevelopment-ready certification, and they worked with Saginaw Future on the DMAT program and Brownfield redevelopment. And finally, I'd mention the final department we had on here, that I didn't get a response from a department head, because we don't have the department any longer. It's the City Attorney's Office. So that was, the department was eliminated and outsourced, and I'd estimate we probably save about $200,000 a year from that department as well, and that has been six or seven years, I would think, that as well. So I just wanted to illustrate the fact that all the departments do work on their day-to-day operations, but they've all had to change operation and think of new ways to deliver service and cost savings. So with that, that concludes the management update.
Have any questions? Yes. And Councilman Michael Ball.
You said we save $800 a day by having that variable speed pump in the Water Department?
Yes.
I talked about how, when you close valves to decrease the flow, so the motor, we're causing a lot of damage to those valves, which could increase maintenance costs, but by being able to open valves up fully and just decrease the motor speed, we're more efficient in our electrical costs, because we're not constantly up and down and creating more friction to do that water. So to run the other, the two pumps we had out there previously, it's about $1,100 a day. We don't run Kochville Station all the time, but with the variable frequency drive, the cost is about $800, about $300 a day in electrical cost versus 1,100, so you'd be saving $800 a day when you're running those variable frequencies.
A lot of money. Thank you. Find out.
Consumers Energy is concerned with reducing energy use and using renewable or sustainable energies. Are they any assistance when we do a project like that, that cuts our use that much?
They're, they're, they're an assistance when we're doing like backup power projects. We save a lot of money if we use them as the contractor to actually design and bid the projects. We ended up, the generators that we just did at the retention treatment basins, we saved about 30% of the cost by going through Consumers Energy versus doing it ourselves. We save quite a bit on the design and then the actual cost of the generators. They were able to secure the generators at a much cheaper price than we were.
So this type of project, we just prepare that?
Yeah, we work with an engineer that does all of the estimates on what's best, what's the best pump, motor combinations to use.
The manager's report. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
I did.
Item number six has been removed.
Okay, so the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 199. Keep in mind that number six has been pulled, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved in support. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
We are at reports from boards, commissions, and committees.
And is there any council members that have any verbal boards or commission reports? Councilwoman Brandon.
I just want to ask the question to City Manager. I know that 9-1-1 was going to come. Are we still working on it?
Yep, he is scheduled. He wanted to make sure, Randy wanted to make sure that he had a little more information regarding the potential millage, so that he could present that to council. So a director file will be coming, I believe he's scheduled in June as well. So we'll have both the Land Basin Conservancy that was requested and the 911 presentation. We'll also have a presentation from a study, one of the studies that Ms. Jones worked on.
Just past week, excuse me, this past week. For a health center to go in place of where the old Yo-Yo Building was, between Davenport and State Street, it was there for 42 years. It's been vacant, I believe, for the last three years, and with the help of Mr. Miller and a few other people, that's going to be open to a health center servicing about 5,000 of our residents over in that area. So go ahead.
It's going to be.
Any other?
Yes, sir. We are at resolutions. Our first one is to adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
Need a motion to adopt?
No move.
Been moved in support. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next resolution is approving the amount for the fiscal year 2018-2019 public safety millage.
To adopt. It's been moved in support. Is there any discussion on the motion for the public safety millage?
This is not necessarily a public safety millage per se, but on the entire concept of public safety. We have had some conversations about getting together to figure out what we can do to improve financing for the police and fire department, the Fire Department in particular. I'm wondering if we have moved forward in any plans for any meetings, for any discussions. The Fire Department took a big hit when we lost the grant, and we've closed the station. We're looking at adding to the infrastructure in the city. We're going to have buildings remodeled and occupied that haven't been for a long time. We're going to have a new college campus downtown. Things are happening in a very positive way. We, as a city, need to be ready to protect these investments in our communities. So if we have not, as council said, all right, what are we going to do about it? We need to do that. So it's more of a comment, and I'm not going to vote no on this resolution. I certainly didn't vote no on the budget. It's something we've really got to have a hard, serious conversation about.
In our next, our next conference.
Planning session, that could be the single topic. If you, you know, council chose, we could do that. I mean, we have one, we were doing them twice a year, and so.
The question of financing, I mean, is, it's a, it's a good question, particularly the way revenue sharing is, and I know Councilman Humphries is aware of a headly case that is at the state right now, which would be of special interest to all cities as well. But I think, you know, I really don't like to get just caught up with the SAFER grant was recent, and let's talk about fire, because if we go back five years, the police department was cut by more than that. So I think a global public safety discussion is in order, and I think what we should be doing is looking 20 years down the road. What do we want to have? How do we want to design it? What do we want the department to look like for the future? So I think that would be a good discussion to have, and probably even before our planning session in January. So I think what we'll, I've already talked to the chiefs about this, and Dennis Jordan and the mayor, and Mayor Protem, so I think it's something that we probably will need a little bit of assistance with, because we want to look at a lot of different things. But we'll, we'll be working on that as we move into the new fiscal year, and we'll keep council updated, and a number of you are going to be involved in that, too. So it's a good, good point, and I did have communicated that with a couple of council members, so it is something that I think we need to think about going forward. We do have a lot of changes. Fortunately, if you talk to Mr. Stempel, and I'm sure Mr. Jerome, the new buildings are designed differently and do have other safety issues that, that, that help with fire suppression and public safety. In fact, we know that's, in the building code, the fire safety issues, and we're also working with a number of these companies for, with the police department, and video cameras, surveillance, and things like that, that have, has shown assistance in solving crime. So we have those items going on with the new buildings, but I think to look at what do we want to have a strategy, because we will have to adapt. I think, I think that's a good point, Councilman. So what do we want it to look like? I don't see us having a lot of additional revenue, and I do see increasing expenses, particularly ramping up for OPEB and pension costs. You're probably looking at realistically a 15- to 20-year period of that increasing. So we're going to have increasing costs and not necessarily increasing revenue at that same level, so how do we offer services as efficiently as possible? So I think that's a very good point.
This neighborhood and the entire city, at this point, we want to keep it that way. We probably don't have any plans for June, July, or August, right? We don't have anything else to do, so maybe we can find some time. That was tongue-in-cheek, by the way.
Any other? Are we at the motion for the, for the first one, right?
You've been discussing the second motion.
Is there any further discussion? On the fiscal year 2018-19 public safety millage. Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our third and final resolution is approving the request of the Downtown Development Authority to levy a two-mill tax on all real and tangible personal property not exempt by law and as finally equalized in the Downtown Development District for fiscal year 2019.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved in support. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
Councilmembers, is there any miscellaneous business to come before the council?
Dr. Austin, and attending church that Sunday. I can't imagine how great it's going to be to be there with him when he preached when we're going to name a street after him at 92 years old. It's going to be a great event, extremely historical event for the city of Saginaw, and I can't wait to be there. Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn? Moved in support. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. We're adjourned.